Is that red flag?
Should get your happy CDs there too.
Burning all the white.
Oh, yeah, thanks.
There he is, okay. All right, we'll get the meeting going. We're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the great and glorious hands of my nation and our government.
Thank you all for coming. Hopefully you've all had a chance to sign in. The X is a mark. If you have your cell phones with you, we ask you to have them on silence so we don't get interrupted. And we can have a roll call?
Mary Hale.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marion Alexander.
Yeah.
Patrick Dukey.
Here.
Steven Iha.
Here.
Alan Reese.
Here.
Matthew Faber.
Here.
And can we have a motion to say that we did have the meeting advertised as required?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second. Roll call on that.
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marion Alexander.
Yes.
Patrick Dukey.
Yes.
And to have a motion to approve January minutes and waive the reading of those minutes.
Seven.
Let me get it out.
Henry Hale.
Roll call, yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marion Alexander.
Yes.
Patrick Dukey.
Yes.
And old business, I don't believe we have any.
No, sir.
Now we can go to new business.
Dustin and Sierra Nicholson, are you on behalf of them?
Uh, yes. Thirty-three Sorrel Avenue. They're asking for a use variance to request to construct an addition, a two-hundred-and-fifty-two-square-foot, one-story addition on the existing residence, which is an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use and not allowed in a T-five district. Sorrel Avenue, the history of it, since, we believe, nineteen ninety-seven, nineteen ninety-eight, when Walmart, Urbans and Development developed that big parcel, Sorrel Avenue was, uh, now, the community did want it opened up to Amperstein to come across, and it was eventually supposed to be commercial. It's been twenty-three, twenty-four years. We do have a Taco Bell at the end of the street and a strip mall. Maybe one of the doctor's offices, I think that it's right behind there or connects to there. Since then, it's been historically residential use with mobile homes, mixed use of mobile homes and some stick-built homes that are in there. So there is some history here with the town with this development. Mr. Bell from ADA, you can take it from there right after Alan describes where it first lives.
All right, Mr. Chairman, this is the Walmart Consumer Square complex here. This is Sorrel Avenue right here, is this length of residential neighborhood, and down here is Amperstein. So we're looking at the last parcel here on the right-hand side. You see it's all Zone T-five. So we're looking at this parcel right here. This happens to be our pump station right there, so. So they're looking to add an addition off the side here as well as in the rear. This is different uses in front, Sorrel Avenue here. So back here behind and then on the side here. Here we look back yesterday. I took pictures yesterday instead of today, better weather. And here's what the engineer has provided. So here you can see the addition on the back as well as on the side. Now, Mr. Bell, if you can get from there.
Okay, thank you. Again, I think the staff provided a pretty good summary. We are looking at a portion of the home to increase to two stories. Sure.
Just so that I can hear the train tracks. Thank you. Sorry.
Okay. So we are looking at a portion of the home to be raised to the two-story level, another portion of the expansion to be single-story. We have provided responses to the different various questions for the variance, from greater return, essential character, uniqueness, and self-created hardship. In this case, again, this is a pre-existing, non-conforming use. Residential character of the overall street. And the client is looking to improve her home.
If you just want to go through quickly your costs associated with that?
Sure. So in terms of the overall square footage, right now, the footprint of the home, seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet, when we take into account the second story, we have an overall livable space of over a hundred square feet. They're looking at addition adds about five-hundred-and-ninety-five square feet between the two areas of expanding on the home. As far as the rate of return, we went through the assessed value of the home, comparable resale, if they built that square footage new. If you look at the estimates, you know, to build new, you're at, you know, four-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars. By the time you get down to the net cost, the net cost of constructing these additions on the home is the best rate of return compared to alternatives. And again, I do give you three bold and accurate tips on that.
All right. To me, it should be pretty clear couple. We might have to go through the process here. Open up the public hearing portion of the meeting. Anybody here like to speak to this matter? And not seeing any hands raised, I will close the public hearing portion of the meeting and go on to our board members, ask if anybody here like to have any comments or questions.
I'm in agreement with you.
This is a use variance, so we would actually have to do a secret on this.
A little secret. So we're gonna go right to. Will the action create a minimal conflict with an adopted land use or zoning regulations? No small impact may occur, moderate to large impact. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of that land? No small impact or large impact? Will the proposed impair the character quality of the existing community? No impact or large?
No impact.
Will the proposed action have an impact on environmental characteristics that establish in a critical environmental area? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in existing level of traffic, existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkways? Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonable available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Will the proposed act impact private or public or private water supplies? Public water, wastewater treatment utilities? Will the proposed action impair the characters or quality of important historical, archaeological, or aesthetic resources? Will the proposed action result in adverse change in natural resources? Will the proposed action result in increasing the potential for erosion, flooding, drainage problems? Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Recommended negative.
So the motion immediately declared a negative declaration to the secret.
Motion.
Seven.
And roll call vote on that?
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marion Alexander.
Yes.
Patrick Dukey.
Yes.
Mr. Uh, yes, Mr. Faber would like to read that.
This was sent down to the county as a two-thirty-nine M referral. The action taken was a local issue. The vote recorded was eight nothing in favor of the action.
Thank you. And then we need to go along with a approval or designing of the request for the variance.
I think the motion we, uh, the variance.
I really, I need to go through the balancing act. I was rushing myself too, I'm sorry. Cannot realize a reasonable return substantiated by competent financial evidence, which you have gone through showing the cost of reconstruction and purchasing other places. The ledge hardship is unique and does not apply to a substantial portion of the district or the neighborhood. It's been there for a number of years and changing. Requested variance will not alter essential character of the neighborhood as, and ledge hardship has not been self-created.
Now, make emotional approval.
Seven.
Roll call vote.
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marion Alexander.
Yes.
Patrick Dukey.
Yes.
Hopefully that wasn't too touchy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next appeal is twenty-two sixty-eight Alicia Sirk for twenty-three Barkham Avenue. Asking for an area variance to request to allow to keep chickens and roosters on the property of eighteen thousand seven hundred square foot without having the allowable minimum lot size of forty thousand square feet in R-two district. Mr. Reese can go over the details first and.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this is Route twenty-two B right here, coming from your right to your left, going to the left is the Morrisonville. So this is Pinebrook, and this one here is Park Home, and this is the residence right here. All Zone R-two. This is the house that we're talking about. This shed you'll see in a picture, the chicken coop is actually behind the shed. So here's front of the house looking in, this is that shed I was just showing you, chicken coops behind that. You wanna show the video or just cut the? No, it's, okay. Okay. May I mean that you'd like to add more yours?
Sure, a whole lot. First of all, there, we have no intention of keeping any such roosters. Didn't realize they were roosters when we got the baby chicks from my cousin. So that part is kind of like null and void. That's not the intent. We, we homeschool. We started in the fall of twenty-twenty when my children were displaced from school for various reasons. And so we homeschool, and part of that is teaching them on sustainability as well as a big portion of environmental aspects and how to live self-sustainable. Both of my fifteen, well, almost fifteen-year-old sons, as a result of some of this, have recently earned their Eagle Scout merit badge, or their Eagle Scout rank. It's been a big portion of their education and the things that they've done with it. I also have a four-and-a-half-year-old, so we, we teach on these things. We, uh, we have a very lovely chicken coop. It's, there's no, it doesn't look disgusting, it doesn't look gross, it's well-kept, it's well-maintained, it's well-cleaned. I will show you some pictures of the coop. The space it takes up behind that shed is that, um, that coop as well as like a run area the size of essentially a, um, a dog kennel. So it's, they're, they're quarantined, I guess, into that area. They're not free-range, they don't run. Throughout yards and neighbors, like neighborhood cats and dogs come to my yard all the time. We have a neighbor who lives a few houses down who her cats that apparently, our outdoor cats are always in my yard and always creating issues. So they're well-maintained, well-kept. The, there are also neighborhood dogs that are barking outside at four to six o'clock every morning, which make as much if not more noise than the current roosters that are housed in my coop, which again, the intent, didn't know what the gender they were, didn't know what they declared them as being until, uh, until, you know, they made themselves known. But again, that is not the point and not the intent. We also. The good thing about chickens, if you didn't know, is they basically eat up pretty much all biodegradable material. So we save, I know the town is on this, um, movement to go green and to, you know, go electric cars and make things so much better. Well, these chickens, this is basic, I'll show you, this, this is what my chickens eat in a day just from my chicken, from my table scraps. So that stuff does not go into the landfill every day, and those are different days. But that's about how much they get every day from chickens, from table scraps.
How many chickens are there actually?
Well, including the roosters, there are twelve, but those.
And two are the roosters?
Correct.
So you have ten?
Correct. We have five people that live in our house. This is something from Uncle Sam. Their, the United States federal government was encouraging families to have two chickens per individual that live in a household to maintain both, keep your, your family and chickens, but also to maintain environmental issues and other things. So the federal government even believes that it doesn't matter how big your property is, that you should be able to have chickens. The city of Plasberg also has their new ordinance, which allows for up to six chickens for two thousand square feet. And so I have much more than that. Not looking to brood them, raise that, or brood them, you know, do anything other than maintain the, the needs of my family. So I will note too, that chickens can reduce biodegradable waste to landfill due to the fact that they're omnivores, they will eat almost all kitchen scraps, and actually thirty chickens will pick a wolf clean within two days. So they, they have a purpose in the environment. They have a purpose in livestock, they have a purpose in family, and they have a purpose in, in the green movement that this town has, has been moving toward, and in fact, I think that they should encourage more people to have, to have these chickens. I will note too, upon information and belief, I was recently informed that there's a person on Bushy Boulevard, which has a smaller place than I, and they were allowed a horse. So just saying, my chickens produce eggs, they produce a way to, you know, maintain things for my family as well as gobble up biodegradable material, so they're actually serving a real function. And based on the fact that I have five people in my household, we eat eggs, it's a large part of our dietary needs, that those two chickens per person in our household actually is, and of course, according to Uncle Sam, believes that that's what you should have. And so I'm asking that we are able to maintain the chickens, the hens, that we have for, for that purpose, and again, no problem getting rid of the roosters. In fact, they were annoying me when I realized what they were, but, you know, until this point, I decided not to do anything until we had some discussion.
And is there a covenant in that area?
Is there what?
Covenant.
A covenant?
Yes.
I don't know what that means.
There were certain requirements that if you were going to be there, that you couldn't have like clotheslines, that you couldn't.
Oh, no, no, no.
Deed covenants.
No.
Have you ever looked at your deed covenants when you bought your home to see if there was any deed covenants against farm animals?
I, I don't believe there is.
Well, we have several things. I'll open up the public hearing portion of the meeting. I know we have several people, we have many letters that have been written in.
Probably read the letters first. So here would be my suggestion. We'll read the letters first. Anybody that's here from the public, obviously is welcome to speak. My estimate based on the letters is that there's few of any people in support of this tonight. If that's the case, I'm gonna limit public comments to four minutes a person, just because if you're gonna get up and say we don't like this, and here's the reason, that shouldn't take that long, otherwise you'll be here for two hours. If there's anybody in favor of it, obviously you can speak probably a little bit longer, but if everybody here are neighbors that are not in favor, I understand that, but if we're just rehashing the same thing, that's gonna kind of spin our wheels a little bit. So we will read all these letters first. I think there's seventeen of them, and then we'll let the public come up, whoever wants to speak. All right?
So we're gonna go, just so you don't hear me drone on for seventeen letters.
Do the county first?
Yes, we can do the county first. So this did go down to the county for a two-thirty-nine M referral, which duly noted on the front page, it says in favor of eight to oh. But then the first line of here says referral twenty-five twenty-three, the applicant, applicant Alicia Sirk, area variance twenty-five Barkham Avenue, description to be allowed to keep chickens and roosters on the property without having allowable minimum lot size of forty thousand square foot in R-two district. This starts out, the county planning board at its March first, twenty-twenty-three meeting voted eight oh to consider this request a local issue with the following comments forward. The town is encouraged to disapprove the request as the applicant is nowhere near meeting the minimum requirements to keep farm animals within an R-two district. The applicant lives on a lot that is a hundred by a hundred and eighty-seven, meaning they cannot feasibly store manure a hundred feet from the property lines. Additionally, roosters are not allowed at all according to the town zoning ordinance. The board further encouraged disapproval to prevent setting an unwanted precedent within an R-two district that would invite other applicants to seek farm animals in densely populated residential areas within the town. Town will bombard Clinton County Planning Department.
So based on that, I want this board to take a vote because the two things from the county contradict each other. I want the board to vote in an open session as to what they consider the county ruling to be, because that will determine what this cert needs here to get approval. So based on what we just read, with the cover letters, cover letter basically checking a box saying the county was in favor, and then the narrative saying they were not in favor, I'd like the board to vote.
I think it was, they were in favor of making it a local issue.
Right.
Not actually.
They weren't, it didn't seem like they were approve or disapprove, they were just making.
A local issue.
I'm gonna tell you, the checkmark says eight oh in favor of the action.
Right. A local issue.
Okay, so if that's what you're determining as by that, so you just see Denoma Cert, that means the county denied this, meaning you need a super majority of this board to, in order to vote in your favor to get a variance.
That's what the interpretation is accurate.
Correct.
Right.
And it appears to me, I mean, I, my reading of it is, the narrative is a disapproval from the county.
However, they also inappropriately discuss roosters, and in my application, I nowhere ever said that I intended to mention roosters.
I don't know if that has a bearing on much.
I think it actually has a big bearing.
Other than, well, they talked more about the, the precedent this was set and the disposal of the manure and the waste as their major issues. So if, if the board here considers that the county two-thirty-nine M referral came back as they're not in favor of this, you just need to know you need a super majority of this board. There's only four of them here tonight, which I believe means you need to get all of them to vote in your favor tonight, because not everybody is here. So before we get into a public hearing, we will review the opportunity, if you wanted to wait this for a month, so more of the board is here, because either, tonight you need all four of these people to vote yes in your favor.
Well, I think that makes more sense.
So that, that is your decision, but that decision needs to be made now before we spend an hour and a half of public comments and reading letters without the entire board here anyway.
Sure, absolutely.
So you're asking this to be tabled for a month?
Correct.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, okay? The county can approve, disapprove, or determine a local issue. When it disapproves, you need a majority plus one. They, they said this is a local issue.
I thought they voted to disapprove.
No.
Based on their narrative.
Eight oh to consider their request a local issue. So they're voted eight oh to make it a local issue.
So I heard your narrative wrong.
Yes. So when they vote.
So you don't need a super majority, you need three out of these four.
Yes, if they denied it, then you are correct, but they said eight oh, that this is a local issue.
And how many cert typically?
Five.
Five.
So now, now.
So I'm entitled to all five?
No.
They're entitled to them, which you've got.
Right, so.
You're not entitled to necessarily a full board being here. You're entitled to four, what's here. So you can go forward tonight with, you need three out of these four to vote in your favor tonight.
Or I can choose to table it until next month?
No.
No, you got to have the ability to present new and different information than what you've got tonight. We give the people the option to table if they need a super majority, which is why I was getting at, you don't, you don't need that, so we can go forward tonight.
So that being said, the first one that we got was March fifth. Steve and I am law code enforcement officers. Steve, our neighbors of Pinebrook Drive, shared with us a letter dated February twenty-eighth on the notice of a public hearing appeal two-two-six-eight. We are in Florida at the present time, and it takes a while for our mail to get here. Plus, we are not sure we would even get a letter, but we do wish to submit our objection to this letter. Living in Pinebrook since nineteen seventy-eight, we have seen many changes to our neighborhoods over the years, both good and not so good, but chickens have no place in the neighborhood like ours. Will you please see that this email is passed on in the board to be admitted into the record? Thank you, Robert and Donna Robere, twenty-five Pinebrook.
I've got one addressed to the town Plasberg Departments of Code and Zoning. This letter is in response to a request by Alicia Sirk to be allowed to keep chickens and roosters on her property, which is within five hundred feet of my property. Would you need to purchase a home in this neighborhood? I carefully considered everything, including the zoning ordinances. I have concerns that allowing this request will interfere with our peaceful neighborhood and override an ordinance put in place to protect exactly this pattern. We like, we would likely have to endure screaming roosters at the crack of dawn, predator animals venturing into the area, and perhaps putting our allowable pets at risk. The unpleasant smell of chicken and rooster waste and unsanitary surroundings, all of which could result in loss of property value. If this request is allowed, it will prevent another neighborhood putting kids or goats next door down the street. This is a residential neighborhood, not rural farmland. Declaration of Protective Covenants, volume four-twenty-nine, page sixty-two, number nine, states, "No noxious or offensive activity shall be carried on upon any lot, nor shall anything be done thereon which may be or shall become an annoyance or nuisance to the neighborhood." On the same page, number eleven, states, "No animals, livestock, or poultry of any kind shall be raised or kept on any lot." I have no doubt the situation will become an annoyance and nuisance for the neighborhood if allowed to happen, and object to granting this request sincerely, Ellen Boyer, twenty-seven Barkham Avenue.
Mine's from nine Pinebrook Drive. Dear sir, in your letter, February twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three, you state that either I could appear for this meeting or present a signed statement. Please consider this letter as such. My property at Busch twenty-three Barkham Avenue, the chicken coop is approximately thirty to forty feet plus or minus. My property is clearly visible. I strongly object to allowing having chickens in our residential district. There is a reason the town of Plasberg has zoning laws, and they should be enforced. My concern is the smell from the coop, and with the warmer weather coming, it will only permeate more so. When I lived in the country, I had chickens, and they do smell, and the roosters make early morning sleeping nearly impossible. In addition, allowing such a situation will without a doubt affect property value. Sincerely, Philip F., I apologize, my, which is his name? You harness?
Oh, I'm on.
Okay.
Yes, that one, okay. The next one is, Mr. Iha, we are responding to the notification of the variance request from Alicia Sirk. We are residents at fourteen Pinebrook Drive, a property in close proximity to Mrs. Sirk's property. We want to express our strong opposition to the granting of this variance. Our, our concerns include the sanitation of this situation, including the stench that occur, as well as the noise that accompanies the housing of these types of animals. This address, twenty-three Barkham, is located in a residential neighborhood where the homes are in close proximity to each other. It is not appropriate or responsible to raise farm animals in such an area where many families, children should have a quiet, safe, clean environment of which to live. We are also concerned that the animals have already taken up residency at twenty-three Barkham Avenue and have been very disruptive to our neighbors during the day and sadly throughout the nighttime hours. We are hopeful the situation will be able to be rectified as soon as possible. As we will be out of town on the day of the hearing, we are hopeful this email serves as the documentation of strong opposition to the granting of this request. If you have any need to contact us in regarding, regard to our position on this situation, please call us at the number. Your time in this matter is appreciated. Ron P. Houston and Jill Houston.
Dear sir and madam, after reviewing and evaluating one of our neighbor's requests to keep chickens and roosters on their property, we have come to the conclusion that this plan is not suitable for our neighborhood. Therefore, we would like to express our disagreement to the above mentioned appeal. Best regards. I'm gonna try. Hussein and Yala, Yala for thirteen Barkham.
Yes, sir. Yesterday, I received your notice advising me of the request for our variance to have farm animals, i.e. chickens and roosters, at location twenty-three Barkham Avenue, Morrisonville, one-two-nine-six-two. The properties at Barkham Avenue carry a covenant. Some of the restrictions are, any subsequent structures placed on each lot must be some sort of version of the house constructed on the lot. Homes must be at least fifteen hundred square feet, and no mobile homes are allowed. Covenant goes further to detail no clotheslines and so forth. Therefore, allowing any structures and pin construction to house farm animals would not be permitted. It is against covenant. It was with this guarantee we purchased our property in nineteen eighty-eight, invested and continue to invest, pay significant taxes, maintain our property and home.
Invested and continue to invest, pay significant taxes, maintain our property and home. I object to any construction necessary to house farm animals. I object to the noise of a rooster and chickens and the smell that will be created by having farm animals on our block. I object to the vermin and wildlife, i.e. rats, coyotes, that will be attracted to our road with the presence of chickens and rooster. I object since I believe this variance will set a precedent for future variances. I object due to the loss of our roads, property values, that will ensure should, should this variance be permitted. Thank you, Mrs. Antoinette Leeson, seventeen Barkham Avenue.
Diane Lynch. Please let it be known that Michael and Diane Lynch, eleven Barkham Avenue in Morseville, strongly object to chickens and roosters in our neighborhood. Thank you. Can you confirm that this email will count as a vote when we're in Florida for the winter? I didn't respond if they're here, or if you guys know, we don't respond because there's not a vote. Neighborhood doesn't get a vote. Uh, then she also sent uh, in the, this is a recent photo of the property asking for permission to have chickens. If not approved, can you be sure they will get rid of them? Sent from the iPhone.
Do you have that picture?
I don't. I'm sorry, that's the video. So, it says pitch or photo, but they actually took a video.
We're gonna play that.
Eventually, I just wanna make sure, that's the video?
From Lynch, yeah.
Okay. Do you have that video?
Sorry, I can't, she had my glasses on, I can't see her. Take me a second. Alright. Is it right here?
Yep.
No, I won't play this. This is the, uh, in the backyard.
Further right, the video that's being played appears to show a video being taken from the Lynch's backyard looking into the Sirk's backyard. You can see between the two yards, a picket fence, and then a chicken, appears to me to be a chicken coop in the Sirk's backyard. That's what I can tell by the video.
There was.
Which is of a someone's structure, as the rest of the structures on my property.
I have one. Good afternoon. This email is a responsible letter dated February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, addressed to Peter J. and Lynn J. Reardon, eleven Pinebrook Drive, Morseville. We are currently in Florida and are recovering from surgery, so we are unable to attend the meeting scheduled March fourteenth at six AM. We are not in favor of allowing a land use variance to the current R-two residential district zoning, which requires minimum lot size of forty thousand square feet in order to have chickens and roosters kept on the property. The property at twenty-three Barkham Avenue directly abuts our property, so the noise and environmental impacts are concerned. Therefore, we object to the appeal, which if approved, would set a precedence going forward for all residents of the town of Plasburg currently within the R-two residential zoning. If further information is required, please advise to daily Peter J. Lynn J. Reardon.
I have one from Angela K. and Jay Bouchard from twenty-one Barkham Avenue. Dear Mr. Imhoff, I am writing about a letter that was received in the mail on Thursday, May third, I believe they meant, may say, March third. Twenty-three, the letter is subject to the CBA appeal twenty-sixty-eight, requesting area variance to keep chickens and or roosters on a lot that is smaller than a minimum allowed lot size for an R-two zoning area. I would like this letter to serve as my opposition to the granting of this variance. The chickens and roosters have been housed at this location for a month or more now. The noise generated by the animals have been noticeable, but not to the point of a nuisance, at least to our family. I do expect that once spring arrives and we start to leave our windows open, the noise will become an unreasonable disturbance quite quickly. As the houses on Barkham Avenue and Pinebrook Drive are very close together, I also have some concern regarding smell of the coop and pin area once the heat of the summer arrives. I'm available to answer questions regarding this letter and opposition to the variance by phone or email. I will attend the hearing in person if my schedule permits.
Here, Ms. Drymoff, we are, this is from Mark Thompson. Yeah, Thompson. We are writing to voice our opposition to the zoning variance request by Alicia Sirk at twenty-three Barkham Avenue. We are out of town and will not be able to attend the March fourteenth CBA meeting. As a longtime thirty-four-plus-year resident of Barkham Avenue slash Pinebrook Drive neighborhood, we are concerned the granting, the request variance would set a precedent that would negatively impact the character of the neighborhood. Issues of concerns including odor, noise, and the likely attraction of predators, potentially endangering pets and young children. Thank you for your attention.
I have one from Kathleen and Marty Bedard. We as property owners at twenty-nine Barkham Avenue are not in favor of the requested variance to allow chickens and roosters in the development. The homes are too close in proximity. There is potential for chickens to roam off property. Pets may become agitated and barked continuously. In spring, summer, and fall months, the sound of roosters crowing in the early AM will disturb residents and awaken children with open windows. The addition of farm animals to the development may mean living, meaning less desirable to many families looking for homes, thus reducing our ability to sell and therefore reducing home values. Sincerely, Kathleen and Marty Bedard.
I have one from Timothy and Beth Stanton at twenty-one Pinebrook Drive. Dear Mr. Imhoff, this letter is in response to your notice dated February twenty-eight, twenty-three, with regard to the appeal number twenty-two-sixty-eight, request submitted by Alicia Sirk located at twenty-three Barkham Avenue, Morseville. We are unable to attend the scheduled public meeting in person to voice our objection to granting this variance request from above mentioned homeowner to be allowed to keep chickens and roosters on our property. Zoning rules and regulations are in place for a reason, and we are requesting that the town of Plasburg adhere to the zoning ordinance in place regarding agricultural uses in our subdivision. Granting this variance could cause problems if other homeowners in the same subdivision submit the same or similar request in the future.
Alan Durkey. Mister Imhoff, my wife and I live at twelve Barkham Avenue in Morseville and have heard that there is a variance proposal to allow chickens and roosters in our neighborhood. I don't believe that we are within five hundred feet, probably just outside, but we wanted to let you know that we are firmly opposed this variance. If you need us to write a letter, we will do that. Unfortunately, we cannot attend the hearing since we are away for the winter. Thank you for your help in this matter. Alan and Betsy Durkey.
The next letter I have came with a cover letter that requested that the name and address of the people writing it be kept confidential. Uh, so I believe it's the town policy to not read letters where we can't tell would be identity of the author, so I'm not gonna read that letter.
Mine is, I, Nathan S. Durkey, residing at seventeen Pinebrook Drive, Morseville, New York. An objection to appeal number twenty-two-sixty-eight, which if passed, would allow Alicia Sirk to keep chickens and roosters on her property.
Hold on, what was that? I think I read that.
This is Nathan. That's it.
Also, the letters that were submitted to us, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I would also like to submit that every, pretty much every letter that discussed it was discussed roosters, and at no point did I ask for roosters to be permitted in my application. Likewise, um, smell was discussed, and there is no smell from these chickens. They're maintained very well. And depending on the materials that you use, depends on how it is all uh, biodegradable and, and how their waste uh, is used. Um, and uh, so it, it's, it's not the case.
Just, just a point, Mr. Chairman. Right now, you have roosters on your property?
I do.
Okay.
And you told me I didn't need to do anything.
So, she got notified of this, and since she was notified up to this point right now, the roosters still reside on the property, so they still have to be addressed.
Correct.
She could have got rid of them that came here tonight and told you the roosters were gone, that, that would have waived the roosters rate. Since they're still on the property, there's still an issue.
No, Mr. Chairman, um, Mr. Reese told me not to do anything until, that I didn't have to do anything until this hearing, so I did nothing.
Okay.
So, that is the only reason why that the roosters have not been removed, because I was notified I didn't need to do anything until this hearing.
Which is correct. She didn't have to do anything. What I'm saying, if she's, if she's.
Then you need to tell me that. Then you need to say that to me, not tell me that I don't need to do anything.
Good. We have the rest of the public.
Yeah. Anybody here that would like to speak, just come up to the microphone, say your name.
My back end, so I'll be right over here. No digging here, man, I'm a retired teacher.
Hold on, wait, you just made a report.
I don't want these people to get my rear end.
Please keep in mind, when you make your comment, you're addressing the board, not Mrs. Sirk, okay?
Uh, my name is Jack Barudy. I live at nineteen Pinebrook Drive. I think you're missing the obvious to begin with. Now, let's say I wanted to put a fence up between me and the Stantons. They live at twenty-one. And I put the fence up. And it doesn't comply with what it's supposed to comply. Right? But I put the fence up anyway. And then, one of these two gentlemen catches me. And I say, oh, I better go see if I can get a variance. That's exactly what she did. She's got the chicken coop up. She's got the roosters there. Then she says, oh, gee, I got caught. Maybe now I better apply for a variance since I got caught. Seriously? Next. The size of the property. Now, you're looking at forty thousand square feet. Well, my wife's a math teacher. She did the math. Okay. Probably Alicia's math teacher as well.
You have property, right?
No, she was not.
Maybe she should have been, then you would have realized property size.
We have the property size.
Well, I wanna do it for the benefit of the group. Now, it's not the Dutton Ranch in Yellowstone. It's not the Ponderosa with the cart rights. It's eighteen thousand square feet. Mister Imhoff, Mister Imhoff, is it Imhoff or Remhoff?
Whatever you like to call it.
He suggested that it has to be forty thousand square feet. If you look at this, you'll see, ma'am and gentlemen, you'll see the lot number forty-one. In the back, you'll see my wife's math. Eighteen thousand square feet. Eighteen thousand. Now, if it were thirty-nine thousand square feet, maybe one little chicken. Maybe another eighteen thousand square feet. It's less than half of what's required. Next item. Although keeping barnyard poultry can be fun and educational, brought up by Alicia, you should be aware that poultry can carry harmful germs and diseases that can be spread and may be, may both sit, make people sick. Bird flu. Capi lappertosis, which is spread through droppings by the chickens in dirty pens and coops. Histoplasmosis, caused by humans breathing microscopic fungus from the poultry area, and salmonella. I got this from the CDC. Centers for Disease Control. Uh, there's also the odor that was mentioned caused by residential poultry, the noise. And another thing that hasn't been addressed, let's say you allow her to have the poultry. Ten chickens? Uh, maybe, let's get another five chickens. Nobody will know. How about another ten chickens? Maybe ten, thirty, fifty, a whole barnyard? Once you let the Sirk's raise the chickens, that every residence because of the precedent has been set, that means I can have chickens. And I don't want chickens. This is a residential area. It's not a barnyard. Uh, and when I explained to you at the beginning, she's defying the code right now with a, with a chick, with a, with the roosters on the property, because she just, she put the coop up first. Then she gets the roosters. Then she gets caught and says, oh, maybe now I better get a variance. Don't you do it the other way around first? If I'm gonna put that fence up that I referenced a moment ago, I wanna put a fence up between me and the Stantons. I can't put a fence up. I better go to you first before I put that fence up. And lastly, property values may be affected in a negative way because we turn the neighborhood into a barnyard. I thank you.
Thank you.
My, my son actually just had a comment that he made. What would you like to make about that? No, the order of events.
Oh, uh, we actually had the roosters before we even bought the coop.
Correct. So, his order of events is, is wrong. Um, but I will note that um, he discusses about the order and applying to various variants. I actually applied for a variance because I was instructed to based on the letter from the cook. Correct.
Anybody else that would like to speak to this mayor that is differ from what we've actually been hearing? Just come up to the microphones there.
I don't find the roosters objectionable. And you can always get rid of the roosters if the noise is what concerns you.
Oh, excuse me, sir. Could you state your name and where you live?
Uh, Ron Light. I live, um, on Pinebrook. And uh, you can get rid of the roosters. You won't have the noise of the roosters anymore. The chickens and the roosters eat ticks, which there is a hell of a lot of them around. I'm more objected, objectionable to all the barking dogs. They're worse than the roosters. They wake me up in the morning any time of the year inside my house with the doors closed and the windows closed. And I can't do anything about it. I love your chickens.
Thank you.
And, and I think, I think it's great, because you have a few chickens in your yard. Doesn't turn the two streets into a barnyard. So. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, everybody's, you know, such a hard time over there.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. What's your name and occupation?
My name's Melanie Fayette. I live at twenty-five Barkham Avenue. Initially, when I dropped my letter off as a neighbor to Alicia, um, we did not want our letter read because we didn't, we have to live next door to them. Um, but at this point, it's gotten to we don't care. Um, so, uh, I'm gonna add to his comment of, um, you know, I have no problems with chickens and roosters. And I agree with a lot of what she's saying about the sustainability and feeding your family, and times are tough, and initially, it's more expensive to keep chickens and roosters, but as time goes on, it becomes less because you've already established them. But, um, our neighborhood, when we purchased our home years ago, we knew about the covenant, and that was one of the reasons we, why we bought our home, because of the type of neighborhood that it is. Um, we actually drove around multiple neighborhoods similar to Barkham, waiting for homes to be available. Um, so, we have a lot of the same concerns as everybody else. We are in opposition of the chickens and roosters in our neighborhood. Um, we live directly next door. Um, the coop is actually in, you know, a shed, that, um, you know, the, the actual structure of the shed is a little bit further from our property line, but the fencing is right up against our fence, and from what I understand of um, sheds in our neighborhood, that they're not supposed to be that close to a property line or an easement. We have the same concerns of wildlife, which we've already been experiencing. There's been hawks in the hedges behind the home. Um, and when they're there, the chickens and roosters become extremely loud. I actually have some video, if anybody wants to hear it, but it's what I wake up to every single morning. Um, not a light sleeper. You can ask my husband, I'll sleep through anything, but I hear it with our windows closed. Um, our cat is in the window trying to figure out what's going on over there, so they don't stop. They, very rare do we not hear them. Anytime we step outside, we, um, we are very outdoors people, so we're outside all the time, so we hear them constant. Um, any little click of our door makes them start crowing, and it's not just the roosters. So, um, if the roosters are removed, then, and she is allowed to keep the chickens, then there is no rooster to uh, corral the chickens and to quiet them and warn them of dangers, so rooster, or the chickens will actually become louder without a rooster to herd the flock. Um, the chickens are just as loud as the roosters when they start. They don't just cluck. Um, if you want to hear an example, I have an example. Many of them, and a few of our other neighbors have heard them too. Um, also, my concern is we have a, a cat. Our cat is an outdoor cat, but we do have a fenced-in yard. Um, and we do keep our cat on a leash in the yard, and he enjoys watching the birds in the backyard, so um, introducing prey birds into the neighborhood is a concern for us, that we won't be able to do that with our cat. Um, also, uh, she made the comment that they do. Also, uh, she made the comment that they do, or he made the comment that they do eat ticks. That's great, but she's indicated that the, the chickens are gonna stay in a coop, so that has no bearing on the amount of ticks that are maybe in the neighborhood because they're gonna be in, in their coop. So, that doesn't, um, that doesn't benefit our neighborhood at all. I think that's, that's all. Also, the, the smell, the noise, um, the wildlife, we've also had, um, skunks in our yard already. There was actually one in our back porch, up on our deck, which is very hot, high off the ground, so we've never had problems with skunks before. We had one in our garage. So, they do, if she's feeding them scraps from their home, you know, whatever they're feeding them, the, the food is there, they're not gonna eat it instantly, so.
Alright.
And, and if, if it is pushed through and she isn't allowed to have them, I would like to know, um, if there's gonna be somebody that's going to check to maintain, about maintaining the, the coop and where the waste is going to go, because they do create waste, and how is it being removed and taken care of, and where is it going? I indicated in my letter also that there are drainage, that there's an easement behind our property between the four houses. I don't know if you have the map there, um, showing where the houses are, but there is an easement in between this area here. All in here. And there's some, there's a drainage actually, right directly behind where those, those shrubs are, and there's one on the other side of our property. I'm not sure what's on this side, but we often have to go back there and clean out debris that, that drains out into that area. So, my concern is, how is that gonna affect the wastewater that's back there when it's raining, or when we have weather like this? And, um, you know, debris gets in there, we have to clean it out because the water backs up. I know that's, the towns should be doing that, but we do it just because the water does back up into our yard, and we want to try to maintain that. Aesthetics of our property is a concern. As you can see, it, the maintenance of the property is, is questionable as it is. So, um, I think that other people could agree that, um, you know, lawn yard maintenance and upkeep of the home and property is already a concern of ours. We have often debris that comes into our yard that we have to clean up or ask them to maintain or fix. My husband sometimes mows around there. So, um, property value is a concern also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to have any comment? I did not see anybody else.
I'll go real quick, because I gotta go back to work. I'm Sean Fayette, I'm Melanie's, uh, husband, twenty-five Barkham Avenue. Absolutely do not want them, uh, they're loud, it's annoying. We don't need it, we live in a nice neighborhood. You wanna, if you were living there, say you're living there, you have a nice house, it's worth three, four, four hundred thousand dollars. You go to sell it, somebody's walking you around, and you hear roosters crowing, chickens clucking. It's not a good selling point, not to me. So, that's all I have to say. Totally against that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting, and ask our board members, does anybody have any questions or comments that they would like to make? No?
I'm most, or, I'm concerned about the, the covenant question.
I, we can be, but I don't think it really would depend.
So, covenants, uh, we have an attorney here, but deed covenants are between property and property owners. The town does not enforce deed covenants. That's why when you first said, if it's deed covenants, even if you were, say if you were to approve it, the neighbors could then turn around and countersue for, now, uh, when you buy in, when you get a deed, you get your deed covered, deed reads, which you can and can't do on those properties, it was in subdivision regulations. The town does not enforce subdivision regulations. It's a great question to ask, that's for the neighborhood to then enforce, like, like front properties, subdivisions, once you enter into a subdivision, you're into that subdivision regulations from setbacks, how tall you can build, how big, whatever that developer put in. That's why when you have an attorney at closing, they say, you know, are you familiar, do you know what your deed covenants are for this property, knowing that you buy it for residence, you can't put a hammer factory in there? That's always the most extreme, is you know that you're buying, protecting your home, that you don't have that kind of light in there as a hammer factory commercial. So, the town were more, we protect the ordinance, what the ordinance says, it's the, it's the forty thousand square foot.
So, is it my understanding that you had the chickens before you applied for the permit?
That's correct. I didn't realize that I needed to.
Okay.
And I was instructed, you can lump all you want, but I was instructed by the town that that would be the course of action, so that's why I did that.
And why did the town instruct you?
Because they received a complaint.
Okay, alright.
If we look at the balancing test for area variance, and we need to consider whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant, and that would be, is in other means. And the second one is undesirable change in neighborhood character or to nearby properties that can be considered to be undesirable change. And I guess the main one for me is whether the request is substantial, and being short over twenty thousand square feet in space.
Is substantial.
Is substantial. And whether the alleged difficulty is self-created. Somewhat self-created, but that doesn't necessarily negate us from approving the variance, but anybody else have any comments? I mean, we have had several, uh, requests for variances for chickens in yards, and we have not approved one throughout the whole town.
Is that, I'm sorry, is that prior to the city's change in there? So, just curious.
This, this has been for the past, I guess, five, six years from me.
Well, good consideration, I, I'll make a motion that we deny the variance.
Okay, second. Second. And show of hands on that. Can you roll call vote? Donna?
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Mary Ann Doan Alexander.
Yes.
Patrick Doane.
Yes.
With that says, since you denied it, now you need to let her know how soon she needs to get rid of the chickens.
Well, I would look for suggestions from the town.
Normally, we do, uh, thirty to sixty days.
So, by end of April, something like that, be right in the middle.
Thirty to sixty days is the typical, you've given up to forty-five days, uh, I believe in, uh, the Wallace Hill one, was maybe forty-five days, just being consistent with precedent.
Right. The one on Eddie Drive, yeah?
Yeah, Eddie Drive, which is on lower Wall, so. It was forty-five days, she hadn't gone in fifteen.
Yeah. Bill, I went to that, everybody?
Yes.
So, what, what will happen is, you guys say forty-five days, then anytime between now and that forty-five day, whenever you get rid of them, you'll call the office on ground inspection, make sure they're off your property, and then we'll close, close out.
And I just need to know where I need to file a notice of claim with. That would probably be the question for you, Mr. Barlow. So, who do I address the notice of claim to? Prior, prior to an article seventy-eight?
So, I can't immediately move my cell.
Well, I need to serve it somewhere, so where am I serving it to is what I'm asking you.
I, I can't immediately move my cell.
Okay, then I will serve it to, on you.
That would be for your attorney.
Yeah.
He's gonna serve it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're up to, one more. Twenty-two sixty-nine?
I'm gonna give it one, give it a minute for people to clear it up.
Yeah.
Next appeal is going to be twenty-two sixty-nine. One second. We're on to the next, if you guys could go out in the hallway, that'd be great, pretty much. So, the next appeal, Mr. Chairman, is going to be twenty-two sixty-nine KPH Health Services at two oh-six Tom Miller Road. They're asking for an area variance rest, request to install a ten-foot tall freestanding sign, which is five feet more than the maximum allowable height than a T-five zone. Uh, this was, uh, Mars?
Used to be Mars.
It used to be a Mars, uh, before. Alan can go over the details of where this place is and what they're looking for.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this is the Tom Miller Road here, this is Smithville Boulevard, and we're looking at this horse right here and this pillar right here, and the sign actually sits right out front. So, this is the T-five area. So, this is the old Mars, um, medical supply building is what it was, this is their sign out front here. See, this is looking from, uh, Smithville up towards it. This is actually looking opposite direction. So, what they did is they, you know, basically just changed names, still the same business, still probably the same people. So, they took a banner and just covered up the Mars, but now they'd like to make this, you know, the permanent sign. And this is what they're proposing for the permanent sign. Okay, sir, it's all yours.
My name is Dan Gill, I'm just a representative, I'm from the sign company, actually. So, I was instructed to come up here and make the case for this.
Lucky you.
Yeah, lucky me. So, they, they have the same concerns probably most any business has, visibility. They, they understand what you're trying to do with, uh, keeping everything uniform. There, they have some concerns about, uh, visibility, of course, is the first thing. One of their major concerns is, um, keeping their sign in character to the others that are around it. There's, uh, he was showing there, up, up the street, there are little ways, there's a whole bunch of signs all the way down through there that are, are in similar to what they're proposing.
That's the, this is the direction I took, because there's nothing on the, going the other way.
Yeah.
So, I took it going down this direction, Smithville's clear down here.
Yeah.
But you can see, right next door, this is, um...
Champlain Smiles.
Yeah, Champlain Smiles, the dentist, their sign. We got the spectacle, uh, one down here, Procare hearing across the road.
So, that Champlain Smile sign, you can see significantly shorter. The sign that is there existing now is seventeen feet tall, which my understanding is the new, uh, regulations have a five-foot maximum, uh, with a thirty-foot square foot allowable. So, a thirty-five square foot sign, like, four by eight is thirty-two, so we could put a four by eight sign there, we're only a foot off the ground. And if you notice how close it is to the parking lot there, our biggest concern, it's visibility for, for patrons that are leaving the, the store, for, for visibility, especially looking for traffic coming that way, with a sign that's, uh, essentially obstructing the view to be able to see down that way for traffic coming this way.
Right, so you would go in the same exact location?
Yeah, yup, the sign was, well, to maintain the setback, which I'm sure is probably what you need, like, that puts it right in the parking lot, and I, my concern is...
But you have a base in the ground already that you just...
Certainly, yeah, yes, that we would reuse. So, this is the new proposal. Um, initially, there, I, I actually submitted for permit for what they actually wanted to do, which was, they scaled this sign down, square footage-wise quite a bit, and actually shortened it up quite a lot, and, uh, I, I was shot down immediately, because we were, we were outside the line. We had it, uh, I think fourteen feet was what our overall height was. So, the, the powers that canes and everybody wanted to try to see if everybody was okay to kind of meet in the middle and sort of go along with the lines of the signs that are there, uh, with that being similar to the other signs that are in, in row there. And, and we are reducing square, we were significantly reducing size of the sign that's existing, and trying, basically hoping everybody can kind of meet in the middle, trying to conform at ten feet tall, which I'm pretty sure is very close to what that Champlain Smile sign is. Just allows traffic to be able to view under the sign.
How many square feet is the sign actually?
It's under thirty-two. It's, if you can see, I've got a color version over here, and I know that that thing, I brought it in black and white, so that's what it would actually be in color. Um, the dimensions are there, the square footage, I, I'm gonna guess it's probably somewhere around thirty.
Yeah, forty-four point six by eighty-nine.
So, currently, they allow thirty-five square feet, but they're under that.
Yeah. And they're fine with that, they aren't looking to put any big monster out there or do anything crazy, they're just trying, they're, they're trying to work with, with the laws here and, and hope to maybe get it up off the ground a little bit for...
I would say that would be actually a safety concern for people entering and exiting the building.
I believe so, as, as well as snowfall, all that kind of thing, covering the sign, if you have motors that are trying to find a place and they can't find it, they're stopping and going, and whatever, it's, we feel like it could be a safety problem.
Uh, public hearing portion of the meeting, anybody here like to speak to this mayor? We've got, uh, county to read in.
I'll key my mouse down on this county referral.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I don't think they had any chickens.
Imagine, imagine if this was a sign for a chicken place.
I had no idea what I was walking into.
Neither do we. So, just wait to the county for a two thirty-nine referral, eight in favor of, with the, uh, twenty-six thirty-one application case, KPH Healthcare Services, area variance to install a ten-foot freestanding sign, which is five feet more than allowable five-foot height than a T-five district. Clinton County Planning Board adds, March first meeting, ADO approved this request with the following, the board has approved this request because they, they feel that the proposed sign is less obstructive and more visually appealing than current sign. The board feels that the proposed sign aligns, who said not say...
Someone you see.
Aligns the signs that would likely to see along sections of Tom Miller Road, and that is a county-maintained highway, and it does not obstruct visibility of pedestrians, allows vehicles leaving the property adequate lengths, lines of sight. The board like to encourage the town to reconsider revising their sign ordinance as current results, and continuous request for area brands. We just redid our sign ordinance, we just did this to not have signs like this, we just did this for people to not come in here when the business is even open and they're already asking for variances. We just redid our sign ordinance to stop signs that are asking for more. So, when the county is saying that, we don't go on feeling, we go on the balancing test. So, if you can't meet the balancing test, so, that's my take on the county's.
So, with that statement made, we can close the public hearing portion of the meeting. And board members have any comments or questions?
I think it's a visibility thing to get that thing out of the, the line of sight for exiting. Okay, I'll go through balancing test, whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant, and...
The, the only thing that would be any, any kind of an expense that I can see coming down the road would be damage to the site from it being so close to the parking lot.
Undesirable change in neighborhood character, nearby properties and their signs up and down the road as we have stated, whether the request...
Yeah, regarding that, if you want to make a finding that this, that the proposal would, would keep this sign more in line with what's already there?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that's an important, i- if you're gonna vote to approve that, that's an important fact you'd want to know.
Or less likely, it would be a dealership up there, you still have a lot of...
Whether the request is substantial, and it's about a fifty percent increase, so, and whether the request will have adverse physical or environmental effects, there's none of that, and it isn't being self-created, so they need to have a sign for their location to be able to be found. So, somebody make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
To approve?
Mm-hmm.
We got one. Second, if you show of hands, can you roll call vote?
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Roger Black.
No.
Mary Ann Alexander.
Yes.
Patrick Doane.
Yes.
Thank you.
Less complicated than chickens.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's your Chick-fil-A sign with the hair. I don't have that kind of luck.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Play a good job.
Respect.
Thank you, guys.
Oh, Mary Ann.
Thank you very much.
For the right.
For breathing the weather, and good luck in the, oh, no, you guys are favorable, you deny us.